All right, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'd like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on television, on Comcast Channel 99, and rebroadcast on WMGJ radio. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Ava Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Echols?
Here.
Billingsley?
Here.
Cannon?
Here.
And Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Keith Williamson to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for your blessings at hand, Father. We thank you for your love, your grace, and your mercy, most of all, Father. Please forgive us where we've failed. You guide us to always go the right way, Father. I pray that we bring you pleasure, honor, and glory. Worship you with all which they do and thanks. I pray that your blessings are on this council, this city, and we give you all the thanks in advance for all that you've done and promised to do. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on August 14th.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of August 10th through the 16th.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamations, Mayor. We do have a special presentation that is to be made this morning. Ms. Minnes.
Good morning.
Good morning.
First of all, I would like to thank the Mayor and the City Council for allowing
us to partner with Myon. It is a digital literacy program that will be implemented in the Gadsden City School System in approximately about two weeks. We will start our program and implementation of PD on August 31st. This program will allow students to have access to a digital library in their homes, in our community centers, in our community housing, in our local Boys and Girls Club, and anywhere that there are, there have access to Wi-Fi, which should be a local restaurant, just anywhere that there is access to Wi-Fi. Also, if there's not access to Wi-Fi, students will be allowed to download on any apps books, up to 20 books. So we have our partners here from Myon, and once again, we'd like to thank the Mayor, the City Council. We are also implementing our reading and math tutoring in the mornings and in the afternoons. So if there are any students or parents who are interested in tutoring, please feel free to contact your principals, because that has actually started on August 20th. Here is Myon with some additional information about the program.
I'm Karen Mead. We're right down the road in Asheville, Alabama. So just a little bit about Myon and also to thank your City Council for having a part in this. This is a community outreach. We want children to read, because volume of reading increases reading. So this is putting approximately 6,000 books in the hands of kids. Parents can come in and download on their device books. Kids can read at home, and when they come back to school, it will sync up. So we're going to do a huge celebration. You're going to see some yard signs that say, "I'm a Myon reader." Hope that we'll work with extended day programs. We're going to work with the YMCA Boys and Girls Club out in the community housing to set up some areas for children to read, so that we can have full involvement as a community to build in those readers. So this is Kristy Coley. She's an expert in the Myon world. I'm just a retired principal and educator 27 years, and I'm very excited about this program.
Myon is a unique platform. It's digital, has embedded literacy tools, and the ability to monitor students' reading comprehension through a Lexile measurement. But the bottom line about Myon is that children are engaged. They love it. I always tell our friends that the very best advertisement for a Myon read is a child, because they absolutely love to have access to books. It's personalized literacy platform where children test on their interest and then their ability, and it recommends books for them. It's kind of like the Netflix for reading. And so children are engaged and excited, and we're just excited to partner with Gadsden City. We just think that a community partnership, much like we do all over the country, but close to home in Tuscaloosa City, is going to be an exciting, exciting thing, and I can't wait to see next year, when we come back and we report to you midterm, this is what the kids are doing in Gadsden, and this is the growth we've seen, and this is the excitement that we've seen in them. So thank you for the opportunity, and just thank you for letting us come today.
All right. Thank you. So I do want to extend that note of thanks and gratitude to the Mayor and Council for having the vision to take the approach that we took in the last budget cycle. If you may remember, there was a lot of rumor and discussion about the Council taking money away from the school systems, but it wasn't so much that, in as much as it was earmarking those dollars for specific programs. And I think this is an example of how that can play out for us, and I think that may be something that we'll continue to do going forward. So thank you, Ms. Minnes, for taking the bull by the horns and moving forward with this. I think this is great. by the owner. Therefore, no action by the Council is needed. Item number 9B is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for grass cutting on property at 2401 Ewing Avenue in District 2, investment properties being the last known owner. The amount is $136. This resolution was tabled for seven days on July 17th. What is the pleasure of the Council?
I move to abate the nuisance.
Well, Councilman Billingsley, in light of some recent information that we received relative to this property involved with some other activity, I'll entertain a motion that we take no action regarding this at this time.
I move that we take no action.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to take no further action on the resolution, let it be known by saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to take no further action.
This is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition on property located at 725 First Avenue in District 3, Tom Dawson being the last known owner. The amount is $16,477.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved, second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition on property located at 1113 Third Avenue in District 5, Denise Deborah Miller and the State of Alabama being the last known owners. The amount is $3,016.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
On recommendation of the Building Department, I move that we abate the nuisance.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition on property located at 2211 Dozier Avenue in District 7, State of Alabama and those certain rights of redemption of Brad Johnson, also known as Robert Brad Johnson being the last known owners. The amount is $3,316.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Move to adopt, second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution assessing nuisance abatement lien for demolition on property located at 2206 Nakalula Road in District 7, William T. Morrow and wife Evelyn F. Morrow being the last known owners. The amount is $5,466.40. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone wish to speak in favor? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Lead the motion.
I'm sorry. So we have a motion to consider, a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearings are resolutions assessing nuisance abatement liens against property for grass cutting work that has already been performed, and we have five locations. 307 Grave Street in District 2, $136. 602 Washington Street in District 3, $376. 413 Van Cortlandt Street in District 6, $136. 418 Henderson Street in District 6, $196. And 2409 Hill Avenue in District 6, $256. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to any of these resolutions? Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor? The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt all five resolutions.
I move to adopt all five resolutions.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt all five resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt all five.
Item number 15 is a resolution authorizing amended contract with the Gadsden City Board of Education. This is for a $200,000 appropriation for the city's capital improvement fund to be used for security enhancement at city schools. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
New business. Is there any new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have one. This is a request from the Engineering Department, and I ask for unanimous consent, and it has to do with field work required to design the parameters for a new emergency preempt equipment on selected traffic signals.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
I move for adoption.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Yes, Mr. President, I have two, both requests from the Police Department. It's a resolution to apply for, administer, and accept the physical year 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant. It's a jag in a amount of $32,476, of which the Gadsden Police Department will receive all funding. And also a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Gadsden and Edgeworth County Commission, Edgeworth County Sheriff Department regarding the physical year 2018 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Grant. Ask for unanimous consent.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion to consider these in tandem, and a second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to consider both resolutions today as items of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move for adoption, please.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, to adopt both resolutions, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Is there any more new business?
Good morning. I am Christina Richardson. I'm the supervisor at Nakalula Falls Park, and if any of you were at our open house Thursday night, you already know this news, but the Art Association approached us a few months ago about bringing back Art on the Rocks, and we were super excited. I've been with the city for about five years, and in that five-year time period, I've been approached by many people on, how can we get it back? And I don't know the history behind it, but, and actually, I didn't know the Art Association put it on. So when Tina contacted me, I was very excited to hear that they wanted to bring this back. So Tina and Elaine Campbell are here today from the Art Association to tell you a little bit more about it.
Mayor and City Council and people who are present for this meeting, I was here in January, and you gave us a proclamation celebrating the 60th year of the Gadsden Art Association. One of the things that we did as a part of this was to recruit new members. Now, I won't say that Tina is a product of that, but I will say that she represents some of the younger blood in our organization. And when Tina brought to the Gadsden Art Association a recommendation or a question, can we do this? We had several meetings where we discussed, it's a tremendous undertaking, and had it run its course, and would it be successful? And at the end of probably three different meetings, we came to the conclusion, yes, it was doable. Yes, we may have been here 60 years, but we're not through yet. And yes, we wanted to approach the parks and see if we could again host, I say again, because the Attic Painters, who were located at Nakalula on the mountain, and the Gadsden Art Association, who was largely a group of artists from downtown, were the ones who collaborated on this from the beginning. The Art Association taking charge of it in its later forms after the Attic Painters were no longer an active organization. So we're here today to announce that, and this is our little flyer, and it simply says that this time it will be called Art on the Rocks at the Falls, and it will be the first weekend in May, and it will be from 9 to 5, Saturday and Sunday, May the 4th and the 5th. I had to look at that to make sure that I got the dates right. May the 4th and the 5th, and we're asking for your support. And I thank the City Council and the Parks and Recreation, the Falls, for all of their assistance in planning this. And this is the young lady, Tina Penley, who is the chairman of the steering committee, who is putting all of this together with lots of amens and "go get it, girl" from me.
Thank you for having us today. My name is Tina Penley, and we are wanting to bring back Art on the Rocks, because there is so much talent in Gadsden, so much talent in the northeast Alabama, and we just want to showcase that. And as part of the Art Association, we do have a fine arts show once a year, but this is something that we want to return to bring more than just the fine arts, bring back the crafts as well. Like Ms. Campbell said, it will be May 4th and 5th, that's Saturday and Sunday. That's also the weekend of our First Friday. So not only will people maybe be coming into town for First Friday, but we'll have a whole weekend of activities that people can participate in. We hope to have our application out on our website by the middle of September. Our website is artgadsden.com, and we will be, this will be a jury show. So applicants will have to supply an application along with photographs of their handmade items. This will be a handmade item only show, and then we expect to be able to notify them by March 1st if they've been accepted. Our goal, or my goal this year, is to have about 75 arts and craft vendors here, of course, along with our food vendors. And I want this to be an annual event. It was an annual event for a long time in Gadsden, and we want to bring that back. Christina has just been fantastic in helping me and answering all my questions, and every time I think of something new, she's very patient and kind and answers, gets right back with me. But I really want to see this to grow, to be in the top 10 best arts and crafts shows in northeast Alabama. We have the potential. We have a beautiful setting with the Falls, with the park, with the people of this city. I know we can make this happen. We have room to grow at the park, not only having the arts and crafts show, but maybe in the future, see how this goes, we can add some more events to go along with it with that weekend. But at this point, we just need to make everybody aware that it is coming back. We have had lots of people being super excited about it, and so we want you to share in that excitement with us. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Let me get the last word in, always. It's called Art on the Rocks at the Falls. Before, it was just simply called Art on the Rocks. And the reason we're naming it Art on the Rocks at the Falls is because Birmingham Museum has Art on the Rocks. However, theirs is a cocktail party. This is not a cocktail party. This is an arts and crafts event, so we didn't want any conflict with them. So it is Art on the Rocks at the Falls. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council.
Thank you. Thank you. That's an important point of clarification, so we appreciate that. We'd also like to offer up another point of clarification. If you heard that Rick James ringtone up here, I'm happy to announce that that was not Mr. Echols. So he is not a very freaky girl. I'm glad to say that.
I have an announcement to make. The City of Gadsden, Mayor's Office on behalf of the Council, we're in the finalizing, we're finalizing lease terms with Buffalo Wild Wings as part of a plan to have the restaurant built along the riverfront at Couso Landing. Founded in 1982 and headquartered in Atlanta, Buffalo Wild Wings features a variety of bodily flavored, made-to-order menu items, including its namesake Buffalo New York Style Chicken Wings. Buffalo Wild Wings is the recipient of hundreds of Best Wings and Best Sports Bar Awards from across the nation. There are currently more than 1,250 Buffalo Wild Wing locations in 10 countries. The Gadsden Restaurant would be built at Couso Landing on the four acres the city owns between the venue and the river wall. The venue and the city's comprehensive plan to develop the riverfront led Buffalo Wild Wings to want to open a new store within this vibrant riverfront complex. The city will do the infrastructure work to facilitate the project, which will also serve the venue. This would be a great addition for Gadsden from an entertainment, dining, and economic development perspective. And new Buffalo Wild Wings would provide a substantial boost to the economy, $4 million in capital investment, 120 jobs, and a great anchor tenant to complement the venue at Couso Landing. Construction of the restaurant could begin as soon as the site prep work concludes and we finalize the lease payments. And some people don't realize, there's 300-plus thousand people within a 25-minute drive of Gadsden, and more and more people coming here, and the more things we do here, the more people are going to come here and spend their money. And so, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, we're all excited about Buffalo Wild Wings, so this is good news. So there'll be more to talk about on that later. Citizens' request? Of course, as always, we ask that you limit your remarks to five minutes, and please state your name and address, please.
Good morning. My name is Jennifer Williams. Mayor, Council, thank you for allowing me to be here this morning. I would just like to thank the Council for the past years of establishing good, meaningful rules of procedure. I think that means a lot to the citizens of this community, and I thank you guys for conducting good, civil council meetings. I've not been privy to attend meetings in the past because of work, but I am expressly proud of my husband, who has presided over many of these meetings. That means a lot to me, and I'm very proud of him for what he's done. I'd like to take this opportunity to, again, thank you guys for me being here, and to say happy birthday to Mr. Echols. They tell me you are 90 years young.
Two days.
That's such a blessing. 90 years young. I just hope and pray that when I, if I live to be 90, that I'm as sharp as you are. Happy birthday. And thank you for your service, your commitment to the community and the people of the district that you've served for so many years. 1989, I think it was? Since 1989?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-six. That's to be commended. I also like to take this opportunity to recognize Dr. Cynthia Toles, Ava Nelson, and other women who work and serve our city. I think it's very important, very dear to my heart, because I have two daughters myself. These women represent good, strong women in leadership, and I think that's very important as a woman raising two daughters. You guys have exemplified good, strong leadership, and I commend you for what you've done. I couldn't be, couldn't sit down without saying that I'm very proud of my husband for his service in our district, District 2. And I also like to thank the rest of the City Council for your service to our community. Before I take my seat, I would like to challenge our City Council members to continue to lead our city with unified purpose. I think that's very important as a community. I think we've made a lot of progress over the years. The venue, as the Mayor just mentioned, we have Buffalo Wild Wings coming, the East Gadsden Community Center, and the like. And I think that's a direct result of good, sound leadership. So I challenge you guys to continue with good, sound leadership, with unity of purpose, and to lead effectively for the people that you serve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good.
If I didn't make any other good decisions in my life, 24 years ago, I made a doggone good one, I think. So, thank you. Thank you for that. Remarks by the Mayor and Council? Mayor?
I do want to probably throw out a jab, I guess you'd say. Everybody that says it was bad to develop the river, they're going to see what all keeps showing up over there in the future. Thank you.
All right. Councilwoman Toles?
I just want to reinforce the reading program, and this is a program that's going to be for the entire city. Adults can also use it, but it's good, it's going to be digital, which means that they can read. You know, everybody, they don't want paper anymore, they want phones. So if you can just read from your phone. There's so much, and I'd like to really say, and the reason why we heard in pre-council that they said third grade, because if you can't read or function by third grade, the number of prisons are designed and built and approved by the number of third graders that cannot read. Those are- Those are statistics and those are facts. So it's very important that we read, and I will always emphasize the fact that you can read for pleasure, but just read.
Mr. Echols?
Yeah. After thirty-two years on the council, ninety years old, seventy years with the same marriage to the same lady, I decided to hang it up this time. I've never seen a more screwed-up election than this one is. We got different little groups all over town. And we need to be one, one group. And think about that. You've got, you, you cannot operate in ten different groups. We've got people that don't like the fact that we spent so much money in East Gadsden. The money is spent. There's nothing you can do about it now. So you need to get behind it, not criticize it, but help whoever's elected to do the job that they're supposed to do. And tell them to remember that they are running to do what's good for the City of Gadsden and the people of City of Gadsden, and not for their own endearment and everything, no. Remember that. People, be sure you look before you leave and vote for the people of Gadsden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Echols. Now, you do realize you're going to get another chance to do a farewell speech. Today's just your birthday.
No, I didn't know that.
All right, Councilwoman Worth?
I just want to say thank you to Career Center, to the City of Gadsden for the job fair on last week. We had right at seven employers with over fifteen-hundred job openings that was on site at the Senior Activity Center with right at three-hundred potential employees that came through the door. Also Parks and Rec for the trolley or the bus that picked them up from the Career Center and took them over to the Senior Activity Center. Also, on this Myon, I know they was talking upstairs, this is going to be really good for our kids and also for the parents that have problems with reading. The parents could read along, it's going to have a helper, a read-along helper on this digital program. So it'll also help not only the student, but the parents if they are challenged in reading. So we want to thank the City of Gadsden there and also the school system for partnering together with Myon. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bill?
Yes, I also would like to thank Mr. Echols for his many, many years of service on this council. And I've only been on it for, for the last three and a half years, and, and he's been a steady influence here. You know, age and wisdom does come with age sometimes, and some people get old and get stupid, but Mr. Echols has seemed to have gotten older and got smarter, so we appreciate that. And I'd like to thank the people that's traveling up South Eleventh Street. They're working on it now and finishing up the sewer lines, so it will be resurfaced pretty doggone soon. So just bear with us another, what, month or so heats? And, and you'll be going like you're going to Talladega Speedway. And that's all I have.
Councilwoman Cannon?
First of all, I'd like to say happy birthday, Bob. I've been on the council for twelve years, and many have really become friends. And I just appreciate everything you've done for the city, and we're going to miss you when I, when you're not here. I miss you already, and you haven't gone yet. But do, happy birthday. I want to welcome the new restaurant we just talked about a while ago. Coming to Gadsden, they've got one in Tuscaloosa, and every time I'd go to Tuscaloosa, I'd go down there, spend all my money down there, my wife knows exactly what we're going to eat every time we go. My daughter was down there for a couple of years in school. And that was the place to be, right there, I'm telling you. It's going to bring in about, on the low side, about three-point-five million dollars. On the low side, it's going to bring us about a hundred-and-twenty more good-paying jobs here in Gadsden. And it's just a win-win for the whole city. And I commend Frankie Davis and Mayor Gotten for trying to get all this going. Appreciate y'all doing that. Everybody's wanted Buffalo Wild Wings in Gadsden, as I always heard for the last years and years and years, it's come into reality, and I really appreciate that. I want to say, make sure next Tuesday, you go out and vote, vote for the candidate of your choice, like Bob says, make wise decisions, who you want sitting up here for the next four years. Derek was talking about how long him and his wife had been married. This Thursday, two days from now, the twenty-third of August, my wife will be married thirty-eight years. And if I didn't say something about that, I would be in the doghouse right out of home. So happy anniversary, Lanning.
All right, thank you. Councilman Reed?
Happy birthday, Bob.
Thank you, Ben.
Yes, absolutely, I've served with him a long time. I've never seen him push or bring anything forward to council that he didn't believe was right, and it turned out to be correct. Absolutely never came. So, I hate to admit that, Bob, but it was true. I really do. We never had too many crosswords, anyway. I do want to thank Tina Penley and Elaine Campbell. I think bringing back Art on the Rocks is a great thing. And it's going to bring a lot of things up to the Falls, into the park. And it's going to mean a lot to your association, too. I think the only thing I've got left is just be sure and go vote. The most important thing, this election, as Bob said, it may be mixed up. But please get a little bit more informed and go vote. Because a low vote, if you vote thirty percent, you don't know what you're getting. Because seventy percent didn't go. That's a little worse. And this town is better than that. We're better than thirty percent, I can guarantee you that. But please do get to the polls and vote whatever you do. That's all.
All right, thank you, Councilman Reed.
That's the most important thing, is to go vote. And if people don't think their vote counts, it does count.
Yes, sir.
Every vote counts. And like Ben says, it's you. I, third vote, you don't know what you're going to get. And you don't need somebody in this, in this seat that's going to cause disruption all the time. I know you can't tell whether that's going to happen or not, but try, please, to put the right people in this, in this job. We've done a great job, I think, in integrating the black community into, and keeping it at a level where we're trying to do what's right and not what somebody thinks we ought to do. And I'm proud of it. And I'm not going away. I'm going to be here maybe another ten years. And I'm going to do everything I can for this city.
There you go.
Amen.
Thank you.
Amen, Mr. Echols, I appreciate you. I'll, I'll start with you. I mean, you, you have been the consummate statesman for as long as I've known you. You, you know, and I'm not saying that just because you gave me my first job going into college. But you have been the consummate statesman. And I've sat at your feet for the last eight years and have watched you from afar for longer than that. And we appreciate you, we do, we do, we appreciate all you've done. And you make, you make old folks proud. You make ninety look good, you really do. Couple other announcements, again, Mayor, and this council as well, and all who have participated in the recruiting effort to get Buffalo Wild Wings here. You know, we're excited about that. We were told by our developer, maybe, maybe a little bit more than a year ago, if you build it, they will come, kind of a field of dreams kind of thing. And, and so, we, we have built the venue, and we're excited that, that it's drawing some commercial traffic. And we do believe and know that there'll be additional commercial traffic going forward. So, so again, let's keep up the good work and keep up the momentum, for sure. On, on Saturday, August twenty-fifth, at Thompson Park, I made mention of this last week, and there'll be some more publicity to come as it relates to this. But Parks and Recreation will be sponsoring and supporting a Movies in the Park. It'll be the first annual Movies in the Park event. It's, it's, it's an exciting idea that has really gone over well in a number of cities. It's something that we've tried to address piecemeal in the City of Gadsden over the years, but we're going to try to support this and continue to move it forward as an event that'll probably start in District Two, but may actually spread to other districts in, in later years. But again, Movies in the Park. The way these events work, of course, is that you find open, grassy, green space and, and you allow people to come up and set, set up picnic spaces and lawn chairs and things of that nature, kind of ahead of time. We'll have food vendors there, so there'll be popcorn and refreshments and, and other foods being sold by, by some food vendors with food trucks and such. And, and then probably around dusk dark, when it gets dark, there'll be a movie shown. It'll be a family-friendly movie. If you're wondering why I'm being cryptic about the name of the movie, it's because there's some things you have to work through in terms of the movie rights before you can start publicizing the name of the movie. So, and, and there's some expense associated with that as well. So, once we work through that and determine that that's something we can do, we may be publicizing, publicizing the name of the movie. But either way, it's going to be a great event, be a great outdoor event. You know, we'll probably get Parks and Rec out ahead of time to fight the mosquitoes, so we won't have that as a problem. But really excited about this, and again, I think it can start in Thompson Park. We're going to do it annually in Thompson Park, but I think this is an event that can spread to some of the other, other districts as well, so.
What time can the people start? I know the movie starts at dusk, but what time can the people start coming to them?
I think, I think it's safe for people to start arriving around six P.M. Yeah, I think it's safe for people to start arriving around six P.M., and, and it'll run until the movie's done, okay? So again, come out and support that event. I want to invite people from everywhere. It's not just a District Two event, even though it's being, it's located in District Two, but we want people from all over the city to come out and support it, okay? And again, it'll be a very good, family-friendly movie, good, family-friendly movie. And lastly, of course, everybody's spoken to it, and I just want to reiterate it. August twenty-eighth is Election Day. Please, 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 come out and vote. You know, I don't want to belabor the point, but, you know, we have historically had, you know, turnout that wasn't the best. So I want to encourage people to come out and vote, and, and come out and vote your conscience. A lot of people have fought and died for the right for us to vote, and, and that's something we need to take advantage of. So we're proud of our city for a number of reasons. Let's be proud of our city because people came out and supported our electoral process, okay? There's nothing else, I entertain a motion that we adjourn.
So move.
Apologize. Due to the City of Gadsden's municipal election on the twenty-eighth, council meetings will be held on Wednesday, August twenty-ninth, next week. And the work session will begin at ten A.M. and council meeting at eleven A.M. All right, thank you.